To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited and just as for all.
(inaudible)
Butler?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
Lutton?
Here.
Oakbridge?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Gratch?
Here.
Vanzenza? (inaudible)
Okay, we have six members present. Mr. Vanzenza is out of town, so he will not be here this evening. Okay, first item on the agenda is the minutes from the October 16th meeting. Anyone did not receive their copy of those minutes? Does anyone have a question on those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as, uh...
Is that mine?
(inaudible)
(inaudible) (inaudible) Take a roll call book, please.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lutton?
Yes.
Oakbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Matt?
Yes.
Gratch?
Yes.
Okay, the minutes from the October 16th meeting are official. Okay, at this time, we have nothing under new business or citizens, so we will move on to...
Jim, I wanted to bring up the matter from last time with the mayor's court report numbers.
I'm sorry?
So, the last meeting, we talked about mayor court numbers, uh, figures from the mayor's court, so...
Well, we can do that when we get to her.
Well, it's not the mayor's report, it's the numbers from the mayor's court that Linda brought up last time, so I didn't know when you wanted me to talk about.
I think that would probably fall under report. I don't know, uh...
No, actually, it's old business, so it's just...
Political stuff.
Well, I don't think it's political stuff. You brought it up at the last meeting.
No, I did not.
Catherine? I asked you for numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah, so... It's up to your discretion if you want to hear it now, or if you want to do it under, uh, reports, we could do it under finances. Do that.
Let's do it under finance. I think that would probably be a proper place for the numbers, right?
Like I said, it's up to your discretion.
Yeah, I would say under the finance report where the numbers would be where it was at.
Jim, I feel like Beth had a question last council meeting, and she's revisiting her question from last council meeting. It's not...
But she's wanting to discuss the figures which should be, uh, excuse me, under the finance one, uh, and then they can go back and forth between where the numbers are. Because I don't have those numbers, so I don't know. Okay, first of all, we'll go to mayor's report.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, this has been a really busy three weeks, I guess, since our last, um, council meeting. Halloween has kept the rec department and myself very busy, and I can tell you I loved every minute of it. The joint efforts of Belmont Soil and Water, our rec department, St. Clairsville Volunteer Students, Belmont Savings Bank, and our library, our fire department, our police department. We had a really successful evening. We are estimating we had about five to six hundred kids down there and parents, and the rec center did a great job. They had all the, uh, inflatables in the tunnel, and it was spooky, and just a really, a beautiful day. It was probably seventy degrees, so it worked out really well. I also went down to check out the laser tag, uh, event put on by Officer Wheeler and his company. Eric, Eric and Rocco at the rec center had the Junior Fair building all cleaned up. It was very cool. It was a very spooky looking place. The kids gave a great time. Um, mayor's court was held. Very proud of our staff. On Halloween, participants brought crock pots, casseroles to have lunch for our crews, and we made enough so that when all the policemen came to work that night for trick or treat, we had hot food here for them. So, kudos to everybody in the staff for doing that. In fact, somebody said to me the next day, they said, "You might be the only mayor in the whole country that did something like that for your police." I said, "I don't know, but I was happy we had hot food here for them." Um, with cooperation, the police and Cumberland Trail departments, we set our football team off in style for their playoff game in Columbus where they played Bishop Hartley, and although they lost, this group of kids and their coaches made us very proud. They represented us with hard work. They showed up to play in genuine class and sportsmanship. Thank you, Coach McLean and staff. Next day, our band members also got a 24-carat send-off with cooperation of the police and Cumberland Trails, and they came back from Medina with a superior rating. Again, we are so proud of our kids. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. S. who take care of the band and get them, make them so wonderful. Finally, Friday, I attended a presentation of a substantial sum of money for the renovation of the Junior Fair building at the rec center. I'm assuming most people saw it. The news are on the paper. I am so excited by that. We want to thank Unified Bank, Mr. Scott Everson, yes, Randy Greenwood, and Don Feenerby for the very generous donation they're making to make the vision of the Junior Fair building a reality. And in another wonderful presentation I was part of, a, a very generous, uh, check from Gulfport that they gave us today. We will very soon have a basketball court down at Central Park next to the volleyball court. So, we are, we are blazing hot, and I, I want to thank our rec department so much for all their hard work. I'd like to thank everyone who, and corporate sponsors, and to all the hard work Jeremy's put into this, too. So, it's been a great thing. I also want to acknowledge the fall season of our St. Clairsville Red Devils, the Fall Sport and Band. They all played beyond the regular seasons. They played in championship or state level championships. The cheerleaders were in each football game. I'd like to mention each sport and the band. For soccer, both the boys and the girls, they played exceptionally and went into tournament level. Girls volleyball, golf, both girls and boys, cross-country, both girls and boys, football team, of course, and the St. Clairsville Marching Band. So, I'd like to unofficially declare November Red Devils month. Thank you to all them. They, they made us all very proud. And last but not least, you want me to bring this up now, Tom, or would you?
Sure.
Okay. I'd like to make an appointment of Ms. Audrey Brandler to the Board of Architectural Review. She brings much experience, a very strong education background. She is a merchant in town. Uh, she is co-owner and operations of Bear Necessities Candy and Soda in the mall, and she also is the owner-operator of Geocennes, Gelato, and Cafe. She manages the staff, she does the scheduling, and she really brings a lot of dedication and investment in the town and youth. I think that's a great thing. Get some of the young people who are involved in business, get them involved in the board. So, I'd like to make that appointment, Tom.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
(inaudible)
Take a vote.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lutton?
Yes.
Oakbridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Gratch?
Yes.
All members are entertained. Now, this is the architectural board, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there still vacancy on the land board?
It is. We've had multiple candidates. We're going to do in-person interviews with them. Yes.
And how many people?
Yes.
Three.
Three, yes.
Okay, that appointment is approved.
Thank you. And that's it, Jim.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Does anyone have a question for the mayor on her report? Okay, we'll move on to Service Director Jeremy Greenwood.
Good evening, council. A couple things before council tonight. Uh, we've got, uh, 35, 20, 23, the MOU, uh, to, uh, for me to enter into a contract with the, uh, Belmont County Land Bank. Um, they negotiated, they're going to actually demo the houses on Neff Street, uh, so that will cost us zero dollars. Um, get that done, and then we could actually work on that sinkhole with the grant. Um, 36, 20, 23, authorization for me to apply for a land and water conservation fund, uh, grant for junior sports, and, and 37, 20, 23, uh, rules to address council. All three of those, we're asking for emergency. The MOU, so that we can get it, uh, with the land bank to get that on their schedule. Uh, the junior sports, to allow us to submit the grant, which is due next month, and the rules for council, uh, that was something that was happening while I was gone, so, uh...
Jeremy, what numbers are you saying?
I was saying 37, 20, 23 for the rules to address council.
Okay. I'm sorry.
He just took the number from the date. He just puts the number from the...
Yeah, they, they float back and forth. It's sometimes it's the date. Um, twelve different meetings since the last time I've been to council, completed projects. The ASME contract, uh, that was formatted, the union is reviewing. I have not heard anything from them back. Uh, there will be a signing soon. Uh, water nodes, um, as we said, constantly doing. Uh, there's been thirty-nine since my last reporting at you guys, so we've got two-hundred-and-fifty-six that we've replaced this year. We've got orders in already for next year, but they're not anticipating them coming in until March, I think is what it is. Uh, the Route 40 water line, the hot tap was completed. Um, just in case anyone's curious, this is what the inside of a 1929 water line looks like.
It's got pizza.
So, yeah. So, that's been completed, working on that, uh, coming down, uh, to supply respecs and the hospital and that new development up on the west end of town. Uh, want to thank Gulfport for the donation for the multipurpose athletic court for the Central Park, the way the mayor said. Also Unified Bank for the donation to help us with the Junior Fair or the Junior Rec Building, uh, the former Junior Fair Building. Uh, water distribution, uh, they're starting paving, patching, uh, to the people that said that we're not going to replace the sidewalks. Here's concrete being poured this morning, so...
Yep, a lot of concrete poured.
That's been go, uh, excuse me, ongoing. Uh, we're working with the residents and the businesses. We're going to do sidewalks first and then come back and let that cure, and then hit the driveways and take care of those. Um, the north side of Route 40 East is all done, and everyone's hooked up. Um, they're, we're currently working on walnut in the south side of East Main. Um, we also had construction meeting number seven, uh, last week, and we're still looking at some culverts and some replacement on that. Um, most people probably know tornado siren was tested today. Everything seemed fine with that. Uh, also, the electric requirements that we had for the new get-go gas station on the east end of town, we are completed. We are waiting for, uh, them to work with the, was it fiber optic and phone companies to move their stuff so we can remove our poles. Upcoming projects, leaf pickup. We got flyers out for leaf pickup. Leaf pickup is scheduled for Ward One, uh, November thirteenth, Ward Two, November fourteenth, Ward Three, November fifteenth, Ward, uh, Four, November sixteenth, Friday, the seventeenth, uh, it's going to be in all wards, and then we're going to go back out again, the twentieth through the twenty-second, that short week for Thanksgiving, and pick up wherever we need to there. Uh, other upcoming projects, obviously, the Junior Rec Building, uh, the work on that, the athletic court, um, Christmas tree. It's that time of year already. Christmas tree is going to be, weather permitting, uh, taken and assembled and put, uh, up on Monday. Uh, still waiting on the HVAC unit for the rec center and the wastewater department, uh, working on easements for the distribution, um, getting the bearings for the third screw pump at the water plant, uh, paving, mapped out the, uh, last ten years of water line breaks, and then had the engineer. So, if there's a street somewhere that someone would like to point out that does not have water line break on it that can be paved, we'll work on it. Uh, working with the engineers on the sinkhole projects, working on the bypass road. That's the actual legislation tonight for junior sports, uh, to submit for that grant for that. Uh, we still have a couple sinkholes on some different streets, still working on some culverts. We mentioned the water nodes already. Route 40 water line project is working. Uh, distribution project, we're sending out code reds, uh, when we have utility locates for the water distribution, when we're going to have work in that area. Also doing door hangers. Uh, we did send out a notice, uh, for the concrete work and some information to allow the residents and people to see, uh, how to properly care for the sidewalk, too, because we do not want them putting salt and, and other harsh chemicals on that sidewalk. It will, uh, you basically eat it away. Uh, still some building projects that we're working on, still administrative policies and procedures, uh, updating inflow and infiltration, inflow and infiltration control plan, uh, some standard details, department-wise, the electric department, uh, Christmas decorations, most of those are up now. Still got some more stuff, and then the tree, uh, pole replacement, service work, disconnects, uh, streetlights, we've been working on them, uh, some substation maintenance and, and general maintenance, tree trimming, truck maintenance, uh, water and wastewater, uh, water nodes, camera and sewer lines where we can. Um, we had a skate company come in and give us a, start to give them this, an engineering quote. Um, water line work, uh, as we mentioned in the utility committee, I actually have actual tap fees for the new house that was built on North Street, so, versus what we have for our tap fees versus our actual cost, and you can see we're, we're totally losing a lot of money on that one. Uh, working on updating policies and procedures. The I-70 water line project is completely done now. There's nothing else that needs done with that one. Uh, distribution project, as we mentioned before, same thing with I-70. Uh, we are fixing fire hydrants, curb boxes, and valves. I do believe we are down to five broken hydrants now. Um, our guys have been going like gangbusters and getting things fixed. Uh, water line breaks, we're up to thirty-seven for the year. Out of that, seventeen of them were ours, nineteen from the distribution project work, one from the I-70. Um, this is last night's break on park. It was literally ten inches from the one that we fixed on in February. So, there are literally two holes right there in that same line going through it. Uh, sewer station lift repairs, we're working on those. Uh, street department, they've been out patching puddles and patching streets. Uh, we're doing some painting, street repair culverts, still working on the sinkholes, uh, and camera and culverts as we need to. Uh, rec center, uh, not too much going on there. Uh, Christie's got some information. We'll go over with that. Police department, um, working on the, uh, car still, car number five, we're still waiting on parts for that, but car number four, the one that was totaled, has been replaced, uh, by a used car that we found, and all of the equipment from the, uh, scrapped car was used to take over to that. We only had to pay a little bit of service, uh, to actually get it installed, and that is back in service now. Um, good of the city, want to ask, it's election time. We would ask that the citizens of the city make sure that they go out and vote, and that's everything.
Thank you, Jeremy. Does anyone have any questions?
Um, the grants that you spoke of, what is the cost to the city on those grants?
Which grants?
None.
Which ones?
Um, whatever ones you had mentioned.
Um, let's see here. Uh, so, sports grant, the Junior Fair Grant Building, uh, the state budget one, that was a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. That was nothing to the city. Uh, we had the sponsorship of the Junior Fair building. That cost us nothing. Uh, light grant for the amphitheaters, that cost us nothing. Um, there's a police body grant, police armor grant. I don't think those cost us anything today, maybe a little bit.
Twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent.
We got seventy-five percent, and it cost us twenty-five percent?
Yes.
Correct.
Uh, the Ohio Land and Water to purchase the bike trail, it's a thirty-one-thousand-dollar grant, cost us twelve-thousand dollars, uh, to get that property. Um, five-hundred-thousand dollars for the ODOT paving grant, that cost us nothing. Uh, five million dollars for water distribution, that cost us nothing.
Excuse me, I don't think you mentioned all those in your report. Just this report here.
No, these are all of them.
I think, um, maybe the building at the rec center, there's a grant?
Yes, the, the hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar state grant.
And it hadn't cost at all to the city?
Zero.
Okay, thank you. That's probably all.
You didn't specify which grant.
I know. I just meant the ones that you just mentioned.
But you didn't specify.
No.
Okay, Beth.
Um, so, the leaf pickup, is there any way that they could start this week with the loose leaf, with all of the leaves kind of off the trees now?
We, we were making sure that everything got off. Um, right now, with it as being as warm as it is, we're trying to patch and pave as much as we can, so leaves are secondary to that, because we're going to lose the plant any week now. So, we've got them set up for this week, and they could cancel tomorrow, but I don't think they will because it's been nice out. Um, so that's why we set it up with the leaves then, and then we'll be short-staffed that small, or that, uh, short week with Thanksgiving, so we'll just be picking up bags and doing what we can with the machinery, the crew that we have.
Okay. Uh, the completion date for the get-go project, do we have any idea?
Uh, our end, we're done. Uh, I mean, other than once we've removed the poles, their end, they were supposed to start last month.
Okay.
Haven't heard anything back from them. So, we, we've done what we said we would do and taking care of it. Um, we're just waiting on them.
Okay. And the Christmas tree, where's that coming from?
Uh, Roosevelt Road, uh, I can't think of the lady's name. It's 124 Roosevelt Road.
She's donating it? Donating it to the city?
Yes, in the name of her deceased mother.
Okay, very nice. So, we'll be able to save that?
Yes.
We can acknowledge that?
I'll find out who it is.
Yeah, I think Gold has some information on it already.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you know her name, Robert?
Um, I'm wondering, like, do I get this, any information on that?
Okay, I just wanted to acknowledge that, right, thank her, that's all. And then, Jeremy, while you were gone, we had gotten, oh, an email from Quicksaw.
Mm-hmm.
I assume there'll be a response?
Uh, the response is, well, yeah, but what was the response? We are looking at all options and will make a determination as to what's going on there.
Okay.
Based off of what we had in the executive session before and the leaked email that came from council to Quicksaw. So, we are not reporting on information.
Oh, so you will respond, but we're not going to know?
Yep.
Because from that, I'm just refreshing my memory.
Yep.
We agreed in that, well, I guess we're not allowed to talk about executive session. So, there will be a response, I guess?
Yes.
Council will not know because of the meeting. Okay. Those are my questions.
Any other questions? Beth, uh, excuse me. Uh, Anita looked up on, I believe the name's Tyler Keller, on for the tree.
Say it again.
Tyler Keller?
Tomler Keller.
I believe that's right. 124 Roosevelt Road.
I just think we should acknowledge that and thank, thank her for that donation.
Thank you. Good morning.
Verify it unless you know.
Yeah, we'll maybe send her, "Thank you," right?
Yes.
Okay, uh, move on. Chief Madam Ben.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, the monthly report for October, we answered four-hundred-and-twenty-nine calls and, uh, for service, had eight crashes, twenty-four arrests, served two warrants, and handled three domestics and ninety-five traffic stops. Um, trick-or-treat night went without any issues, and many thanks again to, uh, the city staff for all the wonderful food, as the mayor had mentioned. Also, to make you aware, October fifteenth, uh, will be our annual active shooter drill at St. Roswell High School. Uh, this will take place between nine and eleven a.m., so please don't travel around or through that area during the time.
Not November?
November fifteenth, yes. Um, it'll be busy. The streets will be closed. The city's closing the streets for us, uh, because of the multiple agencies involved in that.
What time is it?
Nine to eleven.
Nine.
Yeah, there'll be, uh, probably that Monday or Tuesday. ODOT always brings in a dying flash of excitement to kind of tell everybody what's going on. That is, that's it.
Anybody have any questions for Chief? Okay, thank you, Beth. Move on to finance director, Adap Development.
Good evening, everyone. We did, um, get the audit report back from 2022, and there are no significant findings. It is available for public viewing, and I just wanted to thank, thank my team. Some of my team are here, her, Tom, Department has Matt, um, Anita, Dawn, and my teammate Dana, because it, it takes a whole team, and it's, there's a lot of paperwork that goes in and out of my office every day, and I just appreciate all the people that have helped us get that good audit again, so...
So, as far as accounting terms go, that's called a clean audit?
Uh, no significant findings.
Okay.
There are some recommendations, but no, no significant findings, so...
Okay, and then would we follow those recommendations?
Yes.
Okay, and then that's the audit that you emailed to each of us, or, or Jim did. Congratulations.
And then, um, there, I heard that there were some, um, numbers about, about mayor's court, so I did some research on mayor's court, and, um, someone brought it to my attention that there was, um, a report out for some kind of a, a thing right now that said we received in 2017 January, we received three-thousand-eight-hundred-seventy-eight dollars and twenty-five cents that we collected for mayor's court. So, I got with Jen on the mayor's court because I thought that was really high compared to what we have right now. Um, so Jen printed out all the reports for me for 2017. Um, for that month, actual mayor's court collections were one-thousand-five-hundred-forty-five dollars. So, I have all those reports here for that year, and then I have a sample, um, like in October this year, we collected, um, nine-hundred-and-forty dollars, but the city only gets to keep seven-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars of that. And that, I think, what was, um, a mayor's report, she gave me, like, um, the sheets that had been printed out by the previous person that had her job, and those were all the fees, some big receipts, some zoning receipts that were collected for the whole month, not just for mayor's court. So, I have those reports, if anybody would like those. No, that's all.
Okay, anybody have any questions for an end?
Well, can I?
Right, yeah.
I just, what I was going to, wanted to, you want to go?
No, you go ahead.
Yeah, so I would, here's the way I'm looking at things anyways. The last council meeting, there was a discussion about mayor's court numbers, and Linda had shared, said Councilwoman Jordan had shared some numbers, so I had to ask, where'd those numbers come from, right? So, we had a series of emails, right, and at the end of the day, the last email that I got from Linda, um, was for me to look them up myself, right? Um, then eventually, there were numbers posted on Facebook, and she just showed me some numbers just as I was coming to my seat, a minute before this started. So, I'm not sure why that wasn't shared with me before, but the suggestion of me clicking through four years of minutes, but I did. I clicked a hundred clicks, over a hundred clicks, and looked at what was reported for the mayor's court. So, some of it didn't make sense to me because the numbers seemed, um, the exact same numbers, consecutive months, and a couple months that were significantly higher, like thirteen thousand for a particular January, some for six thousand, some for five thousand, and it seemed like the average was more like around the one-thousand, two-thousand mark. So, I did some research myself after the hundred clicks, and found out that those minutes, those numbers reported in the minutes were a combination of building permits, zoning permits... were a combination of building permits, zoning permits, yard self-permits, other, other, other sources of revenue, not just Mayor's Court for those periods. So more accurate accounting would be what you just shared now from, uh, uh, the Mayor's Court actual financial numbers. So that's much more accurate. And I just, I mean, what's the whole point? What, what is the point of bringing up these Mayor's Court numbers?
I didn't bring it up.
You brought up a figure and then why not share those numbers? I guess I just found that like really disrespectful to.
I don't want you to have that.
Okay, so.
No, here's the thing.
If we're going to talk about minutes.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this and then I'm totally done with this, I'm done talking about this Mayor's Court. This is what we, council, voted on as the Mayor's Court collections. Now, if you want to dispute four years' worth of Mayor's Court, please feel free and do that. I mean, however you want to do, go, go back and, and dispute them. And these came, as you know, from a former state auditor and a finance director who taught finance directors throughout the state. She was contracted for over twenty-five years. So I don't think there are a lot of mistakes here. Seems we would have disputed it during this four-year period. So, and then I'm done with it, I'm not, I'm done with this Mayor's Court thing.
But Linda, when it's for your position, you did this, either slowly or...
This is what was reported as Mayor's Court collections.
But it was not.
This is what, and if you, I mean, if your expertise is, exceeds... If your expertise exceeds the state auditors and the...
Wait, state, who's the state auditor?
So let's not make this politics. Let's not make this politics because September third, right, but September thirty. There's a great quote from you on September third, and I know this because I clicked through a hundred minutes, right, a hundred clicks. A great quote from you in the September third minutes that say, put, let's put politics aside, let's do what's best for the interest of the city.
Right.
Let's move on.
Absolutely, thank you, move on.
That was your quote, September third, let's keep it up today. What's in the best interest of the city. You know, I'll tell you what, I'll even read them. You need to do what's right, put those personal agendas aside and do what is right. Ultimately, it's not about if you get reelected, it's about doing what you're elected to do, which is in the best interest of the city residents.
Absolutely.
So.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we beat Mayor's Court, yes.
And I know that because I clicked a hundred times because I couldn't get the figures from you.
I, I think we've gone far enough on Mayor's Court.
Well, it's either dishonest or it, it's sloppy, so that's okay.
Okay, uh, let's get it. We'll move on to planning and zoning administrator, Mr. Murphy.
Uh, thank you, Jim. I just want to thank council for appointing, approving the mayor's appointment for Audrey Brailer. Uh, she has been through the process, through the Board of Architecture Review. She's the owner of property and a business in our downtown district. Uh, she's very positive about the community and St. Clarisville and especially for the historic downtown district. So again, uh, she's going to be a good addition and, uh, thank you to council for approving that appointment. Board of Zoning Appeals did meet last Wednesday, some council members were at that meeting. Uh, just to summarize it, the rec center signage was approved, care funeral, cremation fence approved. And Frosties was given approval until Labor Day two thousand and twenty-four, um, with the agreement of that petitioner of the business owner. Any questions? Feel free to ask and I'll do my best to answer them.
Tom, I would like to give out a big thank you to you and Eric Gay because you facilitated having the zoning report made and ready so that that donation were possible for the city and I want everyone to appreciate how hard they worked for that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, anything else, Beth? Any questions for Dawn?
Any word when they're going to open back up again? Uh, nothing. I emailed Darren to, earlier today, this morning, just to say, hey, like we discussed, get ahold of me, finalize the thing and, um, I haven't heard back from him. I imagine that'll be part of our conversation.
Okay, any other questions after J.C. for Mr. Murphy? Okay, thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
We'll move on to council committees, finance. Speaker Vincenzo's not here this evening. Uh, move on to utilities, Eric Butler.
Yes, we had a meeting tonight. We went over the, uh, utility report like we usually do. We had a sewer request, um, and then we were talking about, um, you know, different things that might be able to do that would help or could help lower utility bills. Um, but one thing that was made very clear was that taking money from our employees' salaries would not lower our utility rates. So I just want to make that really clear. Um, it's been brought up a few times. And taking money from our city employees' salaries would not lower our utility rates. So, um, we'll be discussing other options there, but, uh, that's about it from the meeting tonight. And the next meeting will be on the fourth? December fourth.
First, yeah.
Yep. Six fifteen.
Okay, does anybody have any questions on, uh, utility? Mike had to step out a little bit, so right now we'll skip the police for a minute and we'll move on to North Side, Mike's heard that. So J.C., South Side, any report on South Side? Anything on South Side?
No report.
You have a problem too?
Yeah.
Everybody getting sick? Okay, anything on the safety committee, J.C.?
Never reported.
Just, just a cough on us, that's our safety report.
Okay, building and grounds, Beth O'Bridge.
So we haven't had a meeting, but we have still been in communication with junior sports and from what I understand that the city is, um, I appreciate the city working with, um, junior sports to help them get a piece of equipment down there that would be beneficial both to junior sports and to the city. Um, so wanted to say that and I also wondered, do we know yet the, um, we had talked about the gas and oil rights that are coming in off the property that the junior sports is on, have we ever figured that out yet?
I answered some emails on that. So I can get that to you.
Yeah, I just, I had been in an earlier email chain and I don't know that there's been anything, the last I heard, that we had not yet figured that out.
I can send you what I have.
Okay. Uh, we do not yet have another meeting scheduled for buildings and grounds.
Is that, anybody have any questions for Beth on building and grounds? Okay, thank you, Beth. We'll move on to planning commission, Kristy Lexon.
Sort of old business, um, as part of the planning commission and part of buildings and grounds. Um, there was a DORA committee meeting on October seventeenth at six p.m. Um, public comments were made. At the conclusion, it was decided that because the city does not currently meet the requirements to even apply for a designated outdoor refreshment area, that the next meeting of the committee should be held after the November general election, which is tomorrow, to see if that proposed new liquor license is approved by the voters in that precinct. Therefore, the next meeting will be Tuesday, January twenty-third at six p.m. here in council chambers.
I mean, Kristy, I'm sorry, what did, what did Vanessa, would you say the next meeting?
The next meeting, Tuesday, January twenty-third at six p.m.
Thank you.
Um, the planning commission will meet on Monday, November thirteenth at six p.m. here in council chambers to start a discussion on temporary uses, uh, seasonal uses, food trucks, and the need to update and review the current planning and zoning code applicable to those matters. Um, the planning commission will also meet on December eleventh at six p.m. here in council chambers where the Cumberland Trail Fire District will be before the planning commission requesting the final site plan approval on their project at the firehouse.
Okay, any questions for Kristy on Rexon?
Planning Center.
Maybe.
Planning.
I'm sorry, Planning Center. Questions? Can we move on to fire district?
Uh, due to the cares coordinator, the second cares coordinator, coordinator position creating an opening, uh, Captain Jer, Jeremy Reif was promoted to captain. Um, there's a staffing grant that was, uh, through the federal government that was accepted. Uh, assisted to the firefighters grant, uh, for new extraction equipment was also granted. Um, a twenty thousand dollar retention grant from the Ohio Department of Safety was granted. And that's all.
Okay, the next meeting, man?
Pardon?
Did you say the next meeting was?
Um, I didn't. Uh, the next meeting is December... I'll have to get back with you, Jim.
Okay. Any questions on fire district? Okay, now Kristy will go to Rexon.
Okay. Um, I know this is a little redundant, but I have to also thank Unified Bank for their very generous donation towards the junior rec building. Um, it will transform that building into a multi-use recreational facility, um, inside and out. It's going to be such a huge improvement down in that area. Um, thank you also to Gulfport Energy, uh, for the donation of forty thousand dollars to build an outdoor court. Um, in addition to the basketball court that the mayor mentioned, there's also going to be two pickleball courts, which is, I haven't personally played pickleball, but it's a pretty popular sport. Um, and as she said, it will sit in Central Park by the volleyball courts. Um, the new softball field, um, that is being built is moving along. Footers for the new dugouts have been poured along with all the excavation work and the new fence will be installed this Wednesday. Um, along that note, um, Thanksgiving Day five K. Um, I know it was reported the last time that we were not going to do a five K, but, um, I think Eric must be a glutton for punishment. He works harder than any ten people I know. Um, and he, um, just really wanted to do this again for the city, for the residents. Um, so there will be the second annual gobble till you wobble Thanksgiving morning, Thursday, November twenty-third, commencing at nine a.m. The registration is online. I do have that website if anyone wants it. Um, the proceeds for, from this event will go towards paying for a scoreboard for the girls' softball field that is being constructed right now on the city's property, which is also commonly referred to as the junior sports ball fields on the north end of town. Um, we do need council approval to approve this event, um, the same, uh, route as last year. I think that the police department is okay with this again. Um, I know Matt volunteered his time last year, um, lots of volunteers last year, um, lots of volunteer city employees. Um, so I would ask, um, for council approval for this event.
Okay, do we need just a motion on that or should we?
Yes, just that.
I have a question before, if that's, who decides where that money goes to?
Um, well, since the rec department is doing all the work for it, basically, um, the money cannot, from what I understand, it cannot go to someone in need as was done in the past. I think that can't happen again. Um, due to, I don't know if it was the state auditor, um, I believe it was. So it is going to be used, you know, within the rec department, but for that specific purpose, that scoreboard is needed at that new field. And, um, I know that that project was a little bit short and we should be able to raise enough money to pay for a scoreboard.
So it's like a
It's a rec project.
generate money?
It's a rec, yes, it's a, it's a rec department fundraiser. They will stay in the rec department, go right back into their budget for this.
Okay, does anybody wish to make a motion to J.C. second?
I, I, I would like to know whether or not we're going to take bets whether Kristy will finish the race this year.
Kristy is not going to break any, um, advantages that she has.
She's curious.
Golf cart falling.
Yeah, you might watch her too.
All right. This is all legal.
I'm walking, yes.
Okay, uh, we've got a motion and a second. We'll now take a roll call vote.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Linton?
Yes.
O'Bridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Oh, you know, he, he was stepping out because he was coughing. I just want to see if he wants to come back in for the bill. He wanted to come back in for those.
One cough, yes, two coughs, no.
He's having a little bit of a coughing issue? Can you bring that machine up there tomorrow then?
Jim?
I just wanted to say something. I forgot in my audit part that Jeremy plays a huge part in the budget and...
I'll be right back. Keep letting him back in here.
Jim?
Our meeting is at fifteen. Fifteen. At eight fifteen.
Sorry, I want to sit here and hack in a, in a meeting. I got a cold. Have a cough for two days. It's, it's like Murphy's Law, it's not Tom's, but, uh...
To refresh you, uh, there's been a motion, uh, on the floor. They're going to have, hold the annual turkey, wobble while you gobble, raised out at the, out of the rec center for Thanksgiving.
Okay.
And this year, there's not going to be a, because they're going to pay for the money that is taken and will go for use for the rec center. So there's been a motion to approve that and a second. We now need roll call vote. Do you have any questions on it before we do? Okay, we take a roll call vote, Jacob.
Okay, well.
We did already, right?
We went to Mike.
So, Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Okay, we are going gobble till we wobble or gobble till we gobble or... Okay, Linda did tell me that the next, uh, our board meeting will be the December fifteenth at?
Oh, yes.
Eight fifteen.
I'm sorry, and the next rec board meeting, I'm so sorry, is Thursday, November sixteenth at four thirty p.m. at the rec center.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Any other questions on rec center and we'll move on to park district. Linda, is there anything on park district?
I have no report. The next meeting is next Monday, November thirteenth at four thirty p.m. at Preferred Legacy Bank.
Yeah. Okay, Mike, now that you're back in here, we kind of skipped two things there. Do you have anything on police?
Never reported.
Anything on streets on the north side?
Never reported.
Okay. That concludes the council committees. We'll now move on to ordinances and resolutions. Quad Director Elizabeth Click.
Council has three pieces of legislation before tonight, all of first reading, all with emergency language in it. The first one is resolution number two thousand and twenty-three thirty-five. This is a resolution authorizing Jeremy Greenwood, Director of Public Services for the city, to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Belloc County Land Reutilization Corporation for the demolition of the structures located at one twenty-nine and one thirty-one Neff Streets and declaring an emergency. Uh, the Belloc County Land Reutilization... The Belmont County Land Reutilization Corporation is what is commonly known as the land bank. And it is a, it's been set up to help various entities, whether it be township, cities, villages, utilize money for rehabbing, demolition, et cetera, properties that have fallen into disrepair. This is at no cost to the city. If anybody wants to see what the memorandum of understanding looks like, I have copies here. You can take a look at it.
Okay. Jay, can you read the first reading on Resolution Number 20335?
Resolution Number 202335. A resolution authorizing Jeremy Greenwood, Director of Public Services for the City of St. Clarisville, to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Belmont County Land Reutilization Corporation for the demolition of the structures located at 129 and 131 Neff Street and declaring an emergency.
Okay, that's the first reading. Does anyone have any questions?
Jeremy, we need this now? Yes. To get it in the process, we have to get in their queue, which is if we get it into them before their next meeting. Hopefully by February, March, April, we'll actually get it done. So, that's why. Okay, JC. I move that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings be suspended and declaring an emergency.
There's a second. Take a roll call vote to consider this emergency legislation.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
O'Bridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrasch?
Yes.
All members are prepared.
Okay, 202335 is considered an emergency. We'll now have the final reading.
Resolution Number 202335. A resolution authorizing Jeremy Greenwood, Director of Public Services for the City of St. Clarisville, to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Belmont County Land Reutilization Corporation for the demolition of the structures located at 129 and 131 Neff Street and declaring an emergency.
Okay, does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second? Kristy, take a roll call vote to pass the legislation.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
O'Bridge?
Yep.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrasch?
Yes.
All members are prepared.
Resolution 202335 is passed and handed.
The second resolution is 202336. It's a resolution authorizing Jeremy Greenwood, Director of Public Services for the city to prepare and submit an application to participate in the land and water conservation fund program and declaring an emergency. The emergency language is in there because we need to submit the grant by a certain deadline. This is a federal program that is administered by ODNR.
Okay, Jay, can you read 202336?
Resolution Number 202336. A resolution authorizing Jeremy Greenwood, Director of Public Services for the City of St. Clarisville, to prepare and submit an application to participate in the land and water conservation fund program and declaring an emergency.
Okay, this has been requested for emergency. Does anyone wish to take any further action?
Jeremy, does this need to be done now too?
The grants do. So, this is the one, Junior Sports is paying for the grant writer to write the grant. We're tag teaming with them to do improvements to the field and also the road improvement project that we're coming through. I move that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings be suspended and declaring an emergency.
Second. Kristy, would you consider this emergency legislation?
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
O'Bridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrasch?
Yes.
All members are prepared.
Okay, 202336 will be considered an emergency. We now have the final reading.
Resolution Number 202336. A resolution authorizing Jeremy Greenwood, Director of Public Services for the City of St. Clarisville, to prepare and submit an application to participate in the land and water conservation fund program and declaring an emergency.
Okay, we take a motion, pass?
I'll make a motion.
Roll call vote to pass the legislation.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
O'Bridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrasch?
Yes.
All members are prepared.
202336 is passed.
And the last piece of legislation tonight is Resolution Number 202337. This is a resolution amending Resolution Number 2016-26, a resolution to establish rules for citizens of the public to be placed on the agenda to address the city council at open meetings and declaring an emergency. When you look at this, I apologize for the black and the red, but this is how I have to do it when you're amending previous legislation. Basically, under 2016-26, Section 1, Number 2, you amended, you asked that it be amended, a provision that an individual must provide a written summary. You've substituted summary with statement of the issue to be brought before council. That's the first change. The second one is in Section 1, Number 3. You deleted that provision in its entirety, which used to be, an issue could not be brought before council, which has been discussed at a previous meeting. And the issue must be of such a nature and importance appropriate for council. This determination would be made by the discretion of council president or the law director. You have substituted that provision as a new number 3, that an issue be brought before council by an individual or individuals addressing council must be an issue of which council has the authority to address. No longer is that determination to be made by president, council, or myself, law director. And obviously, we have let down the provision about it being the restriction about if it was discussed in a previous meeting, it can no longer be brought up again. So, you no longer have that, that restriction. Section 1, Number 4, was deleted in its entirety. And that was the provision that if multiple people are interested in bringing the same issue to council, only one spokesperson may be heard to present the issue. So, you're eliminating that provision. So, if multiple people are here on an issue, those people may, if they're on the agenda, may speak as to that issue. Number 5 was amended to read now that an individual is permitted three minutes to present his or her issue unless council permits additional time. It used to be five minutes. You're now reducing it to three. Council also would like to add a number 6, which is that a 15-minute period of public comment will also be added at the end of all regular meetings of council for members of the audience to address council regarding issues raised in that evening's meeting. Each individual is permitted only one minute to make their public comments unless council permits additional time. You've added emergency language in here. Whether you want to do this on three reads and discuss it, the emergency language will just make it go into effect once it is passed.
Wait a minute, we got to read it first.
He hasn't read it yet.
It isn't read it yet.
That's a question before we proceed. Why did we need it as emergency?
We were letting it go in three reads and then passing it on emergency after the last reading so that we didn't have to wait the 30 days, right?
Yeah. There was also a discussion that if we really thought people should get to address council, then why do we wait? We'll just do it. So, at first, when I first brought this up a few months ago, I was saying it didn't need to be an emergency. Then we did ask for emergency language for either of those cases. That we either let it read a couple times and then do an emergency so it doesn't have to wait the 30 days. Or we could just do an emergency because we think, whatever people think, right? But this is the right thing to do to give people greater access to council. So, that's why I'm proposing now and willing, and I'm about to read this when it's my turn to do it in emergency now. That's my rationale.
Any other questions for anybody before we read it?
No, I was the one that brought that up because Beth was reluctant, and she, I think, came up with it. And I appreciate Beth doing that. But the intent is to get people in here. Let's just go ahead and do it.
Okay, well...
Yeah, I mean, that's how, you convinced me for the first time in eight years.
Okay, we'll go with the first reading on this.
Resolution Number 202337. A resolution amending Resolution Number 2016-26. A resolution to establish rules for citizens of the public to be placed on the agenda to address the city council at open meetings and declaring an emergency.
If that's the first reading, does anyone wish to take any further actions at this time?
I move that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings be suspended and declaring an emergency.
We have a second, JC. Take a roll call vote to consider this emergency legislation.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
O'Bridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrasch?
Yes.
All members are prepared.
Okay, this is considered emergency language. We'll now read it for the final time.
Resolution Number 202337. A resolution amending Resolution Number 2016-26. A resolution to establish rules for citizens of the public to be placed on the agenda to address the city council at open meetings and declaring an emergency.
Okay, does anyone want to make a motion?
I do.
Roll call vote.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
O'Bridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrasch?
Yes.
All members are prepared.
202337 is approved and amended. Okay, that's all we have on. Anything there? Before we get into anything else, at the bottom of the agenda, we accidentally got a typo. The next meeting is November 6th. It is November 20th of this month at 7:00 PM. Anybody have any questions? If not, I will entertain a motion during the meeting.